So I don't know if we want to read the minutes with one, two, three, four. We have a quorum, so if we want to do the minutes and then...
All right.
Okay, well, you can do the minutes.
Um, let's go for...
Okay. Library trustee meeting minutes of December 14th, 2021. Meeting was called to order at 5:08 PM. Present Director Jen Crosby, Chair Janice Cook, Nida Abbott, Denise Conti, Terry LaPrada, Michelle Petrus, and Candace Rivera. Absent Helen Hurdow, Paula Peet, and Kate Mercier. Minutes of last month's trustee meeting were read, approved, and accepted. The directors' report, the library continues to require all patrons coming into the building to wear masks. Some indoor programming has started successfully. Our yearly building inspection will be scheduled with the building inspector and the fire department before the end of the year. We have received the sad news that Dr. Thomas Bombadour, a new library pledge and supporter, has passed away in lieu of flowers. It was requested that donations be made to the Granby Library. Jen is keeping a list of donors for the family, and thank you notes will be sent out. Library's subscription to Mango Language Learning has gone live, both Mango and Hoopla track patron usage. Trustee Friends account update, New York Life Securities account is now down $73.74 for a total of $30,857.83. The Alice Stewart account is unchanged. The town has asked for a budget to be prepared reflecting a 2% bottom line increase and a 2% cost of living adjustment. The proposed budget raises the hours for the youth services position from 32.5 to 34 hours a week, and the director position from 36 to 37 hours per week. This was done in an attempt to restore our positions to the hours they were prior to the budget cuts of 2008. We now have new extended hours, and it is beneficial with an allowed 2% increase to work on getting these positions back to what they were in order to staff the building properly. As it stands now, we are at maximum hours open per staff hours available. This increase in staff hours is the first step in hopefully growing our open hours in the future. Motion made by Candace to accept budget is presented with a second by Terry, all in favor. A letter of support. This budget proposal will be written and signed by our trustee chairperson. Warrants $3,366.68 Baker &amp; Taylor, Ingram Entertainment, and Brodart, and $3,428.41 Baker &amp; Taylor, and Library Journal. Motion made by Terry to accept warrants, seconded by Denise, all in favor. Next trustee meeting, January 11th, 2022. Meeting adjourned at 5:40 PM. Respectfully submitted, Michelle Petrus, Ucroyan Secretary.
Beautiful. Does anyone have any changes or corrections?
I make a motion.
Michelle.
Minutes as read.
Second up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Michelle, I did email you my notes.
Oh, okay, I haven't gotten it yet. Did you just?
Yeah, I just did it a few moments ago.
Oh, okay.
So those should be frozen in for you.
Great, thanks.
Oh, hi, Janice. Looks like her sound is off. Looks like Paula is joining.
Hello.
Hi, Paula.
Hi, Janice.
Hi. Okay.
Janice, you're on mute.
Yeah, I actually called in with my cellphone.
Oh, okay. We have you in.
This way, if there's noise on my end, I can mute it.
Okay. We just approved, read and approved our minutes.
Okay. Okay, so you, um... All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. You already did that.
Okay, so directors' report.
Okay, um... Don't have a lot today, but our building inspection was completed. Everything was good. Um, we submit our budget on the 30th. Um, the library was awarded our fiscal year '22 state aid award. Um, it's in the amount of $14,735 for the year. That gets dispersed into different awards. The initial award is half, it's the $7,367.49. And the second installment usually comes in the last quarter of the year, the calendar year. Or, I'm sorry, what am I saying? The fiscal year, last quarter. So we should have that deposited by June 30th, the latest. And that gets spent on books and materials for patron usage. So anything that patrons can come into the library and use, or take out and use, um, we can use on that. So any type of online also. So I will be looking into, you know, how we're utilizing our book budget funding now and see what else we can offer, what we can increase. People have really been using our hoopla, so it might be worth increasing our hoopla money. So I will be looking into all that, but that was good news. I got a little nervous because we usually are the second round, and we were the third round pick this time, so was sweating it a little, but everything went through fine.
Yeah, I received an email today. Did anybody else get it? That was good to... It was good to see it.
Yeah, yeah, phew.
Jen, how does that compare to what you got last year?
Um, I believe it is an increase. I can't tell you exactly how much. Um, it is an increase over last year. Um, gosh, I wish I had it down. But yeah, I think it was like a 7% increase that they were able to offer to town libraries. So across the board, it was really beneficial for everyone. So it's good.
Great.
Yeah, the state's been very supportive of libraries and services.
You committed the budget on the 30th?
Yes.
When will you hear if the budget is approved or disapproved, or?
Um, usually a town meeting in May.
Oh, not till then.
Well, usually there will be, you know, discussion if anything isn't, you know, something that the town would support, they'll usually get back to me and let me know. But we will, you know, it'll be officially voted on at that point at our town meeting. But so far, no news is good news. If anything does come up, any questions or concerns, I will let everyone know. But hopefully they'll be supportive of that. Um, as far as programming goes, a lot of our programming has been switching to virtual for the time being, at least for the month of January. I've already told my book group. The only groups we are keeping are the very small groups. Um, the Read to Dogs program that we have is very one-on-one, and it's in a separate room. The Dungeons and Dragons group that we have is a very small group. Everyone's masked and everyone socially distances. But otherwise, you know, we haven't really received any guidance from the Board of Health as far as, you know, any type of other restrictions. So we're just kind of going on our best, our best instincts for now, just kind of cutting back for at least this month, maybe the next couple of months, depending on how the numbers go. But I think it makes everyone feel a little more comfortable to be back on Zoom.
I agree, particularly with the cold weather. It's nice to not have to, you know, go out in the cold weather in the dark.
That too, yeah, definitely. Um, and then the only other things I have are New York Life Securities account increased by $355.63 in the month of December, so that was positive. Um, it had taken a little bit of a hit and then slowly crept back up, but nothing major. Um, does anyone have any questions for me?
So I do have a question. Um, I was talking with Lou Barry, and we're trying to finalize Alice's memorial garden, and I know it's been dragging on and on. And when I spoke to him back in December, I said, when I get back in January, I'll have a meeting and we'll put all the last steps together and kind of sort it out. Are we meeting in person in the library, or should we try to do something Zoom?
Um, you can meet in the library if you need to, as long as everyone's masked and social distancing. I mean, you're not a big group, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that. So if you need a space, you're welcome to do it here.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, if anything changes, as long as like the Board of Health doesn't put the kibosh on, you know, using our meeting rooms, if anything like that happens, I'll let everyone know. But so far, just using best judgment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And when were you thinking about meeting?
Um, I had suggested sometime in January. Um, yeah, probably sometime, maybe later in the month, just to put the, you know, names of things we need to finish and finalize decisions and so forth from there.
Makes sense.
I'll let you know. I'll see when people are available.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Anything else, Jen?
Um, nope, that's all I have.
Okay, I'm gonna bring up other first. Um, I did put something on here. Um, let's talk about doing virtual meetings for the next few months, because when I first wrote out the agenda, and I thought I sent it to you last weekend, I didn't realize it went to my drafts until Jen said, there's no agenda out there. So, um, we were gonna talk about doing virtual meetings, um, on whether or not we should be doing them for the next few months until we get past this crisis, and things start slowing down a little bit, and then maybe we can go back to doing some virtual. If people want to do virtual because they can't make it to the library, and some people want to go in, we can do that. So because of, a lot of the boards are doing virtual right now, I think it would be best if we stayed that way. So how do you guys feel if we, you know, the next couple of months, if we just do virtual? And then, um, you know, we can look in March, April, to see if we want to go back to doing, you know, half and half, or all in the library?
I think it's a good idea to remain virtual at this point.
Yes, I do too.
Me too.
Yep. Perfect. Um, the second thing, Paula has got a form that everybody needs to sign, and we have to have it back by the 20th. So, oh, Jen's got it now.
Have it here in my hot little hands.
So we really need everyone to swing by the library and sign it. And so Jen, once it's signed, can you send it back to inter-office mail, or can...
Oh, yeah, I can.
Or the last person?
To Kathy.
Okay. Or the last person who signs it just drops it back off to Kathy in the mailbox. But if everybody could swing by and do that, that would be great. We have to have it in by the 20th, and this is a yearly sign-off. We have to do this every year.
And what is it?
It's a contribution.
I'm sorry.
It says contributions on it, but if anybody received anything in the last year, you have to declare it. So if there was any personal gift to any of us as a trustee, we have to declare that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was briefly saying that if you received any kind of donation or contribution as being a library trustee, then you have to document it. But if, you know, like she just wants everybody to sign it, it was an end of the year, kind of.
So by signing this, what are we saying? That we didn't take anything? Or?
Right. Because you're not supposed to be doing that anyway?
We're not!
Because the people are knocking the door down to give library trustees money. They're knocking the doors down.
I know, really.
Right, if anyone offers you money, let me know.
There's been a couple times that I get things from Big Y, and I just pass it right on to Jen, I don't keep it. So I usually don't declare those because they just go right to the library, and, you know, then Jen sends a thank you or whatever out. It's been a while since I've gotten anything, but, you know, I have received things in the past. So you just never know when someone might say, you know, and this is for you, and you can't accept it, unfortunately. I'm sorry, ladies.
Or if we campaigned, which is so silly, we don't campaign.
I know.
You can accept it and give it to the library so they can rattle it off, that's different.
It's hard to get signatures, especially these days.
Exactly. Oh, most companies have that. I have to sign off every year a Big Y that I refuse to sign my agenda.
I think you're right, I think.
Oh, Kathy Kelly had said that it was due by the 20th, so if, you know, people can just go in and sign it, they'll use it before the 20th, and then we can go back to her.
It's that ethics thing, you know, that thing you gotta, you have to do every, every so often.
Yeah.
Yeah, every two years.
I think they do every two years, I believe.
Right, yes.
Ethics training course, I know I did mine last year, so.
But I wish that they would let us use multiples, because I do that for like, like two of my jobs, so I have to do like three times. It's the same.
I have to do it at my, my office, too.
You think they keep track of it?
And it's the same thing with Cory checks, you have to get one done everywhere you go.
So Jen, my position was a one-year position. Um, do I have to go get, I mean, what's the status? I just don't know what the next step is, or what?
Yes.
You're gonna have to, yep.
Go ahead.
You're gonna have to go see Kathy, you're gonna have to go see Kathy, um, and fill out the paperwork. I think it usually starts in beginning of March.
Like March, yeah.
So, yeah, so you'll have to go get paperwork, you'll have to get all the signatures again, and then you'll be on a three-year term.
Well, I never did the signatures before because of COVID.
Oh.
Right.
Yeah, because you're filling in a one-year term, so you didn't have to do the signature. So this time around, we would have to...
Okay.
So what you do is you give one to Paula to put addressals, you give one to Jen to leave at the library, and then you get your family and friends. And I believe we didn't have to, I know, I think instead of getting 50, they said 40 this year, is that right, Terry and Michelle? Did we only have to get 40? I don't, I'm like, really, only 10 left signatures?
No, it should be like 10.
You have to make sure that you print the name, because if they can't read the name, it doesn't count.
Right.
So make sure the name is, it's signed, but it's also printed, both, so that you can read them.
Yeah, if they can't read and identify the person, then...
Then it doesn't count.
It doesn't count.
Okay.
So who else is running this year? So it was Terry, Michelle, and myself last year.
No, I didn't run last year. I didn't run last year. So maybe I'm running this year.
No, it was Leah that was supposed to.
I thought we did it, Paula, last year.
Maybe we're up this year?
Yeah.
I know I'm up this year.
Am I up this year?
I don't remember.
I don't remember either.
But I do have a little card, and it's got the expiration date of my trustee designation, so I came across that the other day.
Yeah, we do have cards, I don't know where it is.
Yeah.
So I thought I ended up like doing it with Kate, and was it you, Michelle?
No, it was, um, I think you're, you and I are always together, Paula.
Yes.
I'm looking for my little...
Those ones are not available until March.
So, well, yeah, it's in March, so the next meeting, we'll probably know a little bit more, and we'll know who it is, because I'll get ahead of the game here.
Okay.
It's in my book bag, if I can find my book bag. Things in my house is like a disaster zone. I've got all my boxes down to take off my Christmas stuff.
Oh, after the holidays, forget it.
Yep. So, um, any other others?
I think Nida stood up saying that she went to Dollar General and stood outside and got signatures there when she was running.
Yeah, she did.
Hey, they're selling the cookies, you could do it with the cookies, the people that are selling them, the Girl Scout cookies.
You can get a signature.
Yeah, but Paula, Paula's addressals worked really good. I couldn't, I must have picked up 15 to 20 signatures there, so I didn't have to go to Dollar General. Yep, and then the library, and, you know...
Candace, I think hanging out at the library is a good thing. It's a good place to...
I did the library, I did wrestle, and then I had mine.
Or Grammy Legion.
I was able, yep.
We got certificates now, like officially. We got these nice little certificates saying that we're trustees. Last time I, I was, I did it, it's nice.
True.
Oh, yeah, I've got the list right here. Um, 2022 is myself, Helen. And...
Leah?
And Candace, yep, and Candace.
So beautiful.
So Candace, Helen, and myself.
Because Leah would have been last year with us, with Terry and I.
Yep.
So, okay, so we'll, um, we'll let you know. Kathy usually sends me an email of when the paperwork's coming out, and I'll make sure I get it out to all you guys to go and pick up your paperwork. And then we'll just do the, I mean, you get nine, you get eight of us, right? Or actually, with, you can get 10 of us, just with all the trustees signing each other's, plus, um, you get Janice at the library and Jean, so there's like 10 signatures right there.
Right.
You know, so it does add up quickly.
Be in person next time we meet.
Yep. You know, I mean, maybe we, you know, we'll, we'll see what comes for April. Let's do February and March, you know, it's cold month, maybe April will have a nice...
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna try and do, we're gonna do virtual for the next two months then, February, March?
Yep. We'll talk about March, whether or not to come back for April.
Okay.
And this way, it'll be easier for Paula when she submits everything. Well, I had to ask Jen, I said, when is my term up as, as chairperson? I said, because I had to take Linda's last year, so I ended up with a three-year chair, and I said, is this the year that I have to come off? And Paula's like, do you have to? So, and I asked Jen to look into it, because it threw me all off having to take Linda's last year, because she stepped off the board.
Oh, yes. I think we changed the bylaws on that, I think we changed the laws on that, I think we cut that, um, out of our terms.
Have to change it?
Mm-hmm. Pretty sure we did.
Every two years?
Yeah, I thought we did too.
I couldn't remember. Um, I just couldn't remember if we did or didn't. But, um, you know, I said, I kind of warned Paula, I was like, I don't know if you're gonna come in this year. Actually, Paula and I, I think we're good together, where I can't be, she's it, so it's kind of stepped in pretty good, I think, on my end. I don't know, Paula might be going, oh, I don't think so, Janice.
Um, no, I thought we worked pretty well together with, um, you know, one of us, whatever, you know? When you couldn't make it, be in.
Yep. So, um, the last thing we have to do is the warrant signing. So Jen, you want to read the warrant?
Yes, oh, and the one other thing I wanted to mention, um, we are going back, we're going back to offering the lobby pickup for patrons. We have a lot of patrons who are, you know, either have new babies at home, or, you know, compromised people, or, you know, if they're awaiting results from a test and they can't come into the building, we have started the lobby pickup again with the cart, you know, especially in the colder weather, we don't want, um, we want people to be able to come in and get their books, rather than have it get snowed on or rained on. So, um, I have started that again, and we put it on the website, so people are aware that they have that option again, and a lot of people have taken us up on it, so just...
Jen, just to clarify, that's in between the two doors?
Yes, right in between our two front doors, we've got a, um, a cart there with the lobby pickup sign on it. So anybody is not comfortable coming in, but you really need books, or if anybody's, you know, sick, whatever, we're happy to still get you a delivery of books.
Awesome.
Yeah, let us know. Um, so I have two warrants here. Our December 27th warrant is for $1,719.49, and that was to Otelco, Baker &amp; Taylor, and the Library Store. And then our January 10th warrant was for $874.44. That was to Baker &amp; Taylor, Gray House Publishing, H.W. Wilson, Ingram Entertainment, and the Library Store.
Okay, um, Jen, do you want, I mean, we can vote to have you sign it, or I can swing by tomorrow, I'll be close to five, between 4:30 and 5:00, and I can swing in and sign them, it's whatever, what's easier.
Um, that's, I can sign them, you know, as likely to do before via Zoom.
Okay, so someone want to make a motion to accept the warrants as read, and to get permission for Jen to sign the warrant?
Make a motion that we get the warrants signed by Jen, as stated and read by Michelle.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jen, so go ahead and sign away then.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Um, anything coming up in the February? Um, like, we have any other deadlines? I know I asked you, but, um... I don't believe we have any other deadlines that are coming up, or...
No, we just have the, um, the trustees that are coming due, have to do their papers.
Yep.
Yeah, when was the last time we did our trustee duties? Were done last, um, September, so we're good with that. We're good.
Okay, um... Jen, just take a brief look on the bylaws, just to see if that got changed, where it's not a two-year thing, because if it is, then either we have to re-edit them, or we shift positions, whatever.
Okay. Let's see.
So...
Okay.
Anything else, ladies?
And any updates from the friends?
Um, we didn't meet in December, we are meeting again on the 20th, so next Thursday we'll be meeting again, also via Zoom. Um, we really, we just had the basket sale, we'll be recapping that, we'll be talking about, we're gonna try to do a month-long book sale in the spring. Um, we might take advantage of the fact that we can't really have a whole lot of programming and just mark the room off for another month-long book sale, since that really seemed to be beneficial for us. Um, we're still getting, we're getting a whole bunch of friends, um, memberships in, it's membership time, so if anybody's, um, hasn't done that, um, but that's, that's about it that I can think of at the moment.
Is Leah doing the book sale, or?
No, this past one was her last one, so, um, yeah, we'll be working with the friends on it to see who's gonna kind of pop in and take over. But the way we did it last time with the month-long sale really made it a lot easier for us and the friends, just kind of ran itself.
Oh, that's good.
So we'll be nailing down all those details at the next meeting. So we'll be nailing down all those details at the next meeting if anyone wants to join us.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more time, when's the next meeting?
On Thursday, January twentieth at six.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? If not, the next meeting is February eighth, um, virtual. And if someone wants to make a motion to close the meeting, uh, what time is it? Six thirty-four.
Make a motion that we, we adjourn the meeting, um, trustee meeting at six thirty-four.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.